Hi folks, let me welcome you to the Greer City Council meeting. We thank you for joining us this evening. This meeting is called and convened this evening, September the 24th, 2019. Having called the meeting to order, I would ask if you would, to please join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then Councilmember Riley Bettis will lead the council in an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you again for this opportunity to meet. We ask that our city would remain in your good graces so that we would have more of the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you are blessed those who fight to keep the liberties and honors that we are so proud of and that we represent every day, and especially those in our fire and police of all cities and municipalities that face those dangers every day. As we go forward, please allow this council to make decisions that are pleasing in your eyes. In our name we pray, amen. We set aside a time at the beginning of each meeting for public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for those who wish to speak to items relative to a matter that is on the agenda later on to come and talk on that topic. We only ask that you be cognizant of the fact that others wish to speak and be mindful of the time that you have. We have two people to speak this evening. I will call the first person, which is Mr. Chip Patat, if he would come to the podium this evening. Mr. Patat, if you would state your name and address, we'll have it as a matter of record. And Mr. Robert Phillips is going to follow Mr. Patat. Floor is yours, sir.
Hi. Chip Patat, 102 Ruby Wood Circle, Greer, South Carolina. Good evening. Again, I'm Chip Patat, and I'm here representing the Board of Directors at Daily Bread Ministries concerning our proposal to add homeless housing at our soup kitchen location. I hadn't planned to go over the whole proposal again tonight since I did that at the last meeting, but if you'd like to hear it again, I'll be glad to. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak again tonight. Thank you for the time and consideration you gave our proposal at the last council meeting. I sensed that this issue was tugging at your hearts as well as your minds. I wanted to briefly address what seemed to be causing the most concern with our project at the last meeting, and that seemed to be council's hesitancy to overrule the State Planning Commission. I want you to know I understand this completely, but I hope you don't think you're sliding or rejecting your staff by choosing a different decision. They had a job to do, and they did. They followed the rules given to them, and their job did not include considering the humanitarian aspect of this project. They followed the letter of the law, and that was their job to do. But the city council through DRD zoning has a discretion to allow variances for projects that you see worthwhile to the citizens of Greer. And at this point, I believe it's council's task to interpret the spirit of the law. I think this is what Councilman Griffin meant at the last meeting when he talked about the common sense. Many towns' common sense finds that the letter of the law and the spirit of the law are exactly the same. However, sometimes they're different, and I believe this is one of those cases. So, I think it might just come down to this. Do you believe this project is worthwhile to the citizens of Greer, especially those who have such a hard time helping themselves? I believe we all know it is. Please let us give these folks the hand up that they so desperately need. Thank you again, and I'll be glad to go over our plans and proposal if you'd like, answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Robert Phillips, and I've been living within the city of Greer, but I came here to speak on behalf of the tiny homes, so I said, "Okay."
That's fine, sir. If you'll just give us your name and address, that'd be perfect.
It's Robert Phillips, 111 River Oaks Road, Greer, South Carolina, 29650. And I would like to just briefly mention the problem. Everybody that follows the news knows the problem they have in these big cities with homeless people. And two of the major problems is finding a place that will allow you to build a home that the citizens don't object. But with our location down here, to my knowledge, we don't have any citizen of Greer that's objecting to these being built here. And also, in most big cities, the city has to supply the money to build homes, and we're not asking the city for any money. And I would also like to comment that I've been a long time volunteer at the soup kitchen, and some of the finest people I've ever met anywhere is people that work at the soup kitchen. They're down there just to help somebody. They have no other motive. They're not trying to gain anything else. And also, I'd like to mention, if you ride around Greer and look at all the other streets in Greer, I think our soup kitchen holds up in appearance with any other place in Greer. For example, we never have trash cans left out or trash on the premises, and that's the people that work there. Try to make it appear as nice as we can, and we would do the same thing with the tiny homes. And if you are kind enough to approve these homes, and they get built, and the next time the weather turns real, real cold, or it's real, real rainy for two days, and everybody here probably has a good warm place to sleep, if you go to sleep in your bed, it'll be a good thought in your mind to say to yourself, "I did something to help five people have a warm place to sleep so they wouldn't be under a canvas or under a bridge somewhere." And these tiny homes is not going to solve all the problem of the homeless in Greer, but it's certainly going to go a long ways, and I would ask you to please consider voting yes on this. Thank you.
Council contained in your packet this evening are the minutes from our council meeting held September the 10th, 2019. I understand a motion that they may be received.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, you've got the departmental reports contained in your packet as well this evening. There is information in the reports from various different departments. Department His and/or the Administrator will be glad to assist you with any questions you might have in that regard. Susan Howell brings us our financial report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm here at Susan Financial as of August of 2019. Starting out with the general fund, our year-to-date revenue was $1,65,243. Our expenses are $474,827. And if you look at our dashboard, you'll see that when you compare the actual to the benchmark, we do have an overall negative variance of $280,000. But we have a positive cash balance of $14,137,130,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, our year-to-date revenue was $421,860. The expenses are $15,375,000, and our cash balance is $1,643,205,000. Looking at the store bottom fund, we have placed a little bit of revenue this year at $9,233,000. The expenses are $131,715,000, and the cash balance in the account is $1,518,800,000. Now we have questions.
Council, floor is open. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate the information. Mr. Diggers, the floor is open for your report, sir.
Thank you, sir. First, let me start by saying what a wonderful weekend we had in Greer this past weekend. We experienced the opening of the city of Greer's new Center for the Arts. We began the weekend on Friday evening with a gala event that was there to benefit Greer Cultural Arts Council. Wonderful evening. It was absolutely a showcase event for us highlighting arts in our community. Many of you were able to join us. Very, very glad that you were. I think we've been able to demonstrate over the weekend to our community what that facility will offer to us for many, many years to come. Of course, we had our dedication on Saturday morning, events and presentations and performances all through the day on Saturday, and on Sunday, we opened the facility to tours and had a little over 500 folks who came through on Sunday afternoon as well just to tour the facility. So, thank you for your past support in helping us make this project a reality. We're very excited about the programming opportunities that we have now going forward. So I look forward to seeing you at the next performance as we gather in that space. There's lots of opportunities for learning and sharing in that space. I want to make you also aware that this Saturday, we will be participating with Rail Fest. That is a growing festival event that we have been sponsoring for a number of years now. That'll be taking place this Saturday here at City Park from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. That event has grown each year to become the event that it is now. And so, if your schedule allows, we'd love to see you here on the grounds on Saturday as we invite the community in to learn about our history with railroad here in our own community, but also for us to share information about rail safety with our community. And so, we look forward to that. On Thursday, October the 3rd, the Greer Station Association will be holding their annual chili cook-off. They are also doing that event here at City Park, so we'd love to see you come out that Thursday evening for the chili cook-off. And then also for us as an organization, I remind you that our employee safety recognition breakfast will be taking place on Friday morning, October the 4th. So we hope that you will be able to join us that Friday morning as well. A little bit of confusion at our last meeting, so I want to try to make sure I'm setting straight our schedule for our municipal garage process. We did have to experience a little bit of realignment for that bidding process due to some communication issues. Our pre-bid conference will be held on Thursday, October the 3rd. That will be taking place here. That is a mandatory pre-bid conference for anyone that is interested in bidding on the garage project. And then we are scheduled to do a bid opening on Wednesday, October the 16th at 1:00 p.m. So the intent was to give time for organizations that are interested, contractors that are interested in the project, they can receive the plans, have a chance to review the plans. We bring those folks in, we discuss the project, answer any questions that anyone may have. Everyone hears the exact same answers so that we are on a level playing field at that point, and then we give them time from October 3rd until October the 16th for them to prepare their bids. We will again receive those by 1:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 16th. So we're looking forward to getting that information into us. Last but not least, I wanted to invite Mike Sell, our deputy city administrator, to the podium. I'm asking Mike to introduce a special, I'll call him a guest for this evening, but he is serving on our staff as well. I'm happy to report that we have an opportunity to partner in a program that is sponsored by the ICMA, International City and County Management Association, and the United States Department of Defense. There is a program between those two organizations that look for opportunities to provide a mentoring opportunity for veterans who are transitioning from active service to civilian life, who have an interest in working in local government. So they have to have expressed an interest in that program. We have, for a couple of months, been negotiating and working for the placement of an individual, a veteran in our city, and so Mike has been given the responsibility of managing that program while we work through it, and I've asked him to offer some information and to share with you how we are partnering to help veterans get placed in this profession. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Diggers. Thank you, Mayor Council. I'd like to bring up John Dolan, who is our participating fellow in this program. John's going to be participating with us for the next 16 to 20 weeks, carry us through the middle of December. As Mr. Diggers indicated in describing the objectives of the program, the ICMA, the International City and County Management Association, spent years developing a skill bridge program for veterans that are retiring, transitioning out of service, that may have an interest in going into local government, matching up the skills that they have while they performed in military service with communities that have a need for special project management, opportunities to expose them to local government services, local management. We spend a lot of time reviewing city operations with the participant and getting them familiar with the different aspects of city management across the various departments and with our partners out in the community as well. So they get a good comprehensive overview of what it's like to transition out of what they currently do into a local government service rather than a military service type operation. We're real fortunate that the background that Mr. Dolan brings to us is 33 years of military service. He is, will be finishing his service by the end of the year. One of the appealing factors of this program for us, too, is that the bill and the cost of this program is footed by the Department of Defense. He continues to maintain his salary and is paying his benefits through the military while he's participating in the fellowship program. He, his last, what he did for the past 11 years is serve as chief of operations for a couple of military bases and then out of Puerto Rico and Miami. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the work he's going to do for us. The project is going to complete for us, but before I do that, I'm going to give him an opportunity to address council and share some information about it. John?
Good evening, and I appreciate you inviting me here. I'm a major in the United States Army. I did 20 years as enlisted, finished 20 years military, and then I did 14 as an officer. I finished off at the end of this year with 34-plus years. I did four in the Marine Corps, 30 in the Army. I feel like I have, like I told Mike a few times, what I did in the military seems to reflect a lot of what they do here, except maybe there's a few more moving parts here. But I'm not only just an operations officer, chief operations, but I'm a civil affairs officer. And I know people that have the same skills as me, and I'm telling them, "Hey, you're going to do this program because it, one, it's what we call Army Fund. It's very intensive work, I mean, long days like, you know, these guys do, but it's interesting work. It's rewarding, just like in the Army, where taking care of a military installation or a group of people. Here, you're taking care of a city. Same thing, making sure things are running smoothly behind the scenes. He has, the mayor, he has to report to you. I have to report to the Colonel. So, same type of thing. But I enjoy it. It's fun work. It's very rewarding, and I'm enjoying it. Mike's a good instructor, and I have a project that he'll tell you about that, well, be, I'm looking forward to it because it looks like it's a lot of fun. And like I used to tell my wife, "It's Army Fun." No, I don't know Army Fun.
Sorry, you tell me about service, though. I don't know if it's Army Fun or whatever. I think it's all fun, like, I'll take this kind of fun any day. One of the things that I did want to take a couple minutes to talk about is a project that John's going to be working on for us, and that is a project that has been a long time objective and goal in the city council's strategic plan, and that is the establishment of a neighborhood services program, to be able to provide a wide range of community services that we do provide in what I would call kind of a hodgepodge factor. We have a lot of our departments that participate in community services, whether it be through our police department's community outreach program or the work that GCRAS does for us in regards to housing rehabilitation. But we want to obviously expand those services and those options that are available to be able to help communities build identities, to be able to help them establish neighborhood associations and neighborhood identities, create a council of neighborhoods that can collaborate and work together to help solve the problems that they have in their communities, whether it be for property maintenance, housing upkeep, safety in the community as well, how to partner with other entities in the community such as churches and volunteer organizations to bring resources into that community to help them with tasks and things that need to be done. And we've been trying for, at least the time that I've been here and under council's direction to the strategic plan, working, putting together a program and setting up a structure for what that would look like for the city of Greer. There's a lot of communities out there that do really good job with this. John's going to be visiting those communities, doing some fact finding and research, gather the information necessary for us to structure our program and to put together, help identify what resources that we're going to need, be able to start putting in place, be able to carry out some of these activities that we've targeted. We think it's a very worthwhile program. We looked at his background, what he's got experience in. We think it is right up his alley. He's already kept the ground running. He's done a lot of work in advance. We've spent the past, he's been here about three weeks now. We completed a whirlwind toward city operations. We're going to be getting him into all the various departments in the city so that he can spend time kind of in a drill down in those departments to see how they operate and how they help support our community outreach efforts overall, and then help us kind of put together an idea, a more cohesive plan in moving forward with that type of program. So as we go through that, you'll hear more about that, and as we get toward the end of that project, we will be presenting recommendations and a structure for how that would look for council's consideration. Obviously, at the beginning of the year, we go into our planning period with council and staff and through our budgeting, but to give you a roadmap that you can take a look at to make evaluations for how you want to move forward in that regard. So we think it's going to be a good program, and we think we've come out very well with having John participate in this fellowship with us. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have about the program.
Council, floor is open for any questions, discussion, anything that you might want to get more information about. Well, we thank you both for being here this night, this evening, and giving us some information. Look forward to working with you as you get to learn our community and some of those neighborhoods, and I'm sure that each council member will make themselves available to help you better understand some of the things that may be of concern in their districts and hopefully introduce you to some folks there that would ease your process in terms of, again, to look at how we might better serve our community. So thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Anything else? If not, we'll move to items of local business. First and final reading of ordinance number 34-2019. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Greer Mill LLC located at 300 Connecticut Avenue from I-1 to TD. Mr. Matt Mahoney, any new or additional information in that regard, sir?
No, sir, there's any additional information at this time.
You entertain a motion to receive?
So moved.
Say. Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council's second item for us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 35-2019. This comes back to us as a matter that was held over. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Daily Bread Ministries Incorporated located at 521 East Point Set Street from C2 Commercial to DRD. Any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 35-2019? Mr. Matt Mahoney?
No, sir, there's no additional information that has come for us this last meeting.
For the purpose of discussion, I'm going to have a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Mayor, if I may offer some additional information, we tabled that item over a question of a two-thirds vote.
We did.
Yes, we did. We did go back and we researched it. While we were frantically looking through our ordinances that evening, this particular issue is actually addressed in our zoning ordinance, not within our codified ordinances of the city, but in our zoning code. It does specify that a two-thirds vote of council, and it specifies that it is a two-thirds vote of council members present. So if you have seven members present and you're taking action that is contrary to that that was presented through the Planning Commission, that would require five votes and an affirmative to be able to, for that to pass. In the environment, if you have six members present, as you did at the last meeting, that would require four, and again, two-thirds vote of each. So it's actually a pretty simple mathematical calculation for us to determine the number of votes necessary, but we were not positive of whether it was a two-thirds vote of the council or two-thirds of the council present. It is of the council present.
Thank you, sir. Floor is open for discussion. Brian, I understand that you've had some discussion with Chip and his staff about some guidelines that they're willing to follow for a size kitchen, that sort of thing.
Yes, sir. Luke Helms and myself met with Mr. Patat last week and discussed what IRC requires, International Residential Code is going to require. Each unit will have to be a minimum of 400 square feet. It will require a kitchen. So those are some of the requirements we wanted to make sure he was fully aware of because within the statement of intent, he said that he will build into international residential codes. We wanted to make sure that was fully aware of it.
If this indeed passes first reading, I would just, I would caution you, Chip, to take the time between first and second reading to make sure that what you're committing to is going to fit in that area and not encroach on the railroad property. And the only other request I would make of you is maybe put up a fence so that people wouldn't wander into the railroad area. That would be what I would caution you.
I have just a statement and one question. First of all, thanks for the whole group coming. Anybody that's been around me long enough knows that we don't have enough people that come to our council meetings, and this is a group of honest and thoughtful adults, but you always need folks to hold your feet to the fire. So, thanks, and there's a few of them out there that I really hope that they check your pockets. Bob, there's a few others out there, but I'll name them anyway. The question I didn't have, and it was stated tonight, that the houses would be used for step programs. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, tonight it was stated that they may be used for emergency housing. Is that true as well?
If I may answer, that is correct. Within their statement of intent, they list short-term and, short-term emergency housing and long-term dinner and stuff.
Like Mr. Arrowood, I have, I guess, more of a statement than I do a question tonight. I do appreciate those of you that have turned out this evening. In regards to this question, I, you know, there was a lot of discussion at our last meeting, and we were able to clear up a number of things which was beneficial, I think, both to this council and hopefully to our community. While there are still a number of folks that may not understand all that we go through in terms of making these decisions, hopefully some of the interaction that I have had over the course of the week would give them a
the course of the week would give them a little bit more insight into what we are here to do and why we do this. It's, it's always difficult when we are faced with decisions that are, involve good intent and/or humanitarian types of things. We, we all at this table want the best for this community and seek that in our decisions. And I don't think that you would find anybody sitting at this table that doesn't understand that there is indeed a homeless issue in our community that needs to be addressed, and we are particularly thankful for those of you who do that. I mean, I am appreciative. That is an issue that continues to exist and will exist, and I applaud you for trying to figure out how to, to best handle that issue. And I have no doubt that, regardless of what takes place tonight, that you will continue to do that, and we thank you for that. I think it's, I think it's an oversimplification to simply assume that the only thing that we have considered is whether or not we ought to overrule our staff and our commission. That is, that is a failsafe that is involved in the way that we've written our ordinances. And it is a pro-propos, as Mr. Griffin stated last week. There are occasions when we may need to apply our insight and wisdom to a decision and overrule, and that's why we have the ordinance written the way that it is. The thing that I have struggled with over the, over the past two weeks, and I think, I suppose that I have had either enough conversation with Mr. Patat or some of his friends that he did indeed hit the nail on the head. Like many at this table, I have spent countless hours agonizing over this decision and praying about this decision, and working through what I think is going to be best in the long run. And while it does involve the decision about whether or not we want to go against our, our staff and our commission, we know that is an alternative that we have. For me, it has boiled down to a matter of, of choices. And is it making individual choices about how we're going to apply our planning and zoning, or are we going to take a more holistic approach? It's a difficult decision because I can't think of a better place to address our homeless issue than on the property where it is being addressed right now. If the request had come before us for a dormitory-style shelter with six, eight, ten, twelve bedrooms, a common area, I would, I would wholeheartedly support that. If the request had come before us for a group home setting, I would have wholeheartedly supported that. I think it would be an absolute best place to put it. But good intentions don't always lead us to good decisions, and this council has found themselves in that place from time to time in the past, and we understand that, that we, we have to live with those decisions, some of them longer than others. I will be perfectly honest, when I woke up this morning, I felt like the easiest thing to do was to acquiesce along with probably the rest of this council and vote to move forward and overrule our council, our commission and our staff. But I have determined that the easiest answer is not always the best answer, and that the most affordable and quickest answer to a problem is not always the best option. And I will vote as such this evening. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a statement also. And first, I want to thank the group for coming out, and like Councilman Arrowood says, we deal with a lot of issues and people don't generally show up, you know, to show support one way or the other, but I commend you for stepping out and showing up. And I'd also like to thank this council. And I love this council because they put their heart into anything we do for this city. They put their heart and soul in it, and I think it shows, you know, from the innovative way our staff comes up with new programs like the vet and that. And I just, you know, commend this, this council too, because we go in sometimes, but in the end, we try to do what's right for the city, even though we, we may agree to disagree, we try to do what's right for the city. And the one thing that stuck in my mind out of this whole debate was the statement that Councilman Bettis made where he said that if it doesn't fit on that property, where does it fit in the city? You know, and that one just stuck with me because I don't know where it would fit in the city if it doesn't fit there, you know, and I understand why people may have other thoughts and that, but I think that's a, a good place for it. And I don't take lightly overturning the Planning Commission, what they say. I want to state too that I don't take that lightly either, because I think we have a responsibility to, here to what we set them out to do.
This is a little different than most votes we take because of the affirmative and the no, as I believe Councilman Griffin brought up last time. The ordinance that is before us, thirty-five, two thousand and nineteen, comes with a recommendation for denial. So a vote for denial is a yes vote. A vote to overturn is a no vote. I got it backwards. I got it backwards.
Voting on the order.
The Planning Commission voted to deny.
Deny.
So if they voted to deny, the ordinance in front of you is to approve. It will require five affirmative votes for the motion to pass.
This is agreeing with, as written here, for the tiny homes to be built at the Suk Kitchen.
Correct.
Okay. Are we clear now? A yes is to agree with the deny. Oh, excuse me, I did add that backwards. As much time as I spend in even rubbing it down here, I got it backwards.
A yes is to agree with the order.
It's a not deny, that is correct, yes.
Let's all get this clear now.
If you get it wrong, it's okay, right? I complete stupidity on this issue. Are we clear on, on the vote? Are there any official comments, questions or discussion?
I'd like to say something, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I don't take this as a, as a precedent to overruling our Planning Commission in the future. I, I totally respect the job that they did and kind of what Mr. Patat said, the letter of the law. I think they did a great job, and that's, that's why we put them in that place, but I do think there is a spirit of law involved in this one, and if it's not there, then where is it? And this is a unique project, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see where it goes, and I'd like to, and I hope it's successful, and I hope that we can have opportunities to do bigger projects like the mayor brought up in the future. And obviously, it's not ideal, and to his point, it would be nice if it was more of a, a dormitory style or a little bit larger or something more consistent with C-two. I'd like to see that, but you got to start somewhere. And I think this is, this is a great ministry to hitch our horse to and, and to see where they can take this project and maybe projects down the road. I believe this will be a great success, and I believe, believe it'll be the start of many good things to come. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Others?
I would echo the same thing. I definitely know a few of you all over there from my volunteering work out there, and I definitely think it's a great project. So, kudos to you all. Thank you.
Well, we'll just echo also. And like you said, you know, the Planning Commission, they do a great job of questioning and get, trying to get all the information set up correctly, to have the boundaries and have this and have that. And as it was said at the last council meeting, you know, I don't recall maybe like one, you know, that we haven't gone along with, with the Planning Commission, that was probably, I don't know, five, six, seven years ago, something like that. So had to do with a lot, I think. So anyway, we do appreciate everyone, the ones that are appointed, and your job to as overseeing that. And thank you to all of you for coming out and support of the right project. Thank you.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
No. We'll pass on first reading. So return the commission. We'll move to items of new business then. We have our, our chief with us this evening. We are going to receive a bid summary from the fire department regarding turnout gear.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're before you asking for permission to make a purchase for turnout gear. This purchase was budgeted, and the recommended vendor price is actually under the amount that we budgeted. So we ask for your approval to move forward with this purchase tonight. I have time to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. On a recommendation of the chief, you have the bid before you this evening. I entertain a motion to receive?
So moved.
Say. Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion or questions of the chief.
Where Sweptsonville, North Carolina?
I'm sorry.
Where Sweptsonville, North Carolina?
It's kind of up towards, towards the, between Raleigh and the East Coast. So that's over in Texas.
I assume, being low battery, that that's the one you're requesting?
That is the one we're recommending going with, and it's new to its fire and safety. While they're located there, they do have sales stores here that come to South Carolina would actually help us with this purchase, sizing and what happened.
Oh, that's uncomparable items.
They're exactly the same, Ms. Mayor. We, because they have come out of protected sales territory, we weren't satisfied with just going with that price, so we actually reached out to the ACAC, which we've made some purchases on before, that you might remember, the ladder truck and also some playground equipment. And so we reached out to them because that would be one that we could actually use the kind of price check, and as you can see, they actually came in higher than the bid that we recommended.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Council, final evening, final business, new business this evening before us is the first and final reading of resolution number sixteen dash two thousand and nineteen. This is a resolution to accept Pleasant Meadows subdivision streets, namely Pleasant Meadows Court and Anna Rose Court into the city system, rear street system. Robert Rue, our assistant city engineer, will bring us information in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. I bring the streets of Pleasant Meadows subdivision before you this evening. Project was started September twenty fifteen. It's located off Pleasant Drive near the intersection of South Buckham and Super Road, located in Council District One. All utilities are in, streets are paved, and it's completely built out, twenty-eight homes. Staff has inspected the construction and believes it meets city standards. Therefore, staff recommends Pleasant Meadows Court, length of four hundred and sixty-three feet, Anna Rose Court, length of four hundred and ninety-three feet. Be accepted into the city street system for ownership and maintenance.
Thank you, sir. Heard the recommendation, and staff, do I hear a motion to receive? So I'm going to have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, on the executive session, we have one matter to discuss this evening. Entertaining a motion to go into executive session.
Hello.
We got it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to project homecoming as allowed by state statute, section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-five.
Comes as a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, on the executive session, we have considered one matter. It was an economic development matter pertaining to project homecoming as allowed by state statute, thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-five. But we've taken no action in that regard. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.